The board, that the select board and the budget committee to hold all their questions until the presentation is finished to allow Will to go through his presentation without being interrupted. Charlie is here. He serves as our owner representative on the library project. He may have some comments as well during the presentation. And Ben Blackman, our library director, is here as well, and he may make some comments about the parking needs of the library during the presentation. So at the conclusion of the presentation, members of the select board and the budget committee will have a chance to ask questions of the presenters. Because this is a budget workshop, questions should be focused on the budget issues. The board and the committee may engage in some discussion about the issue as well. That's a discussion and question period for the board and the budget committee only. Once the select board and the budget committee have finished their questioning and any subsequent discussion, I'm suggesting, and this has, the rest of the board is going to have to nod their head on this one, members of the public will be invited to make comments. Because of the number of people here, my suggestion is to limit comments to two minutes per person. Nobody be allowed to comment a second time until all who wish to comment have had a chance. And those who want to comment will have to come up to the podium and speak into the microphone because the meeting is being recorded and perhaps by then livestream.
We're live.
You're live now?
We are live.
There's a reason the room is named after him.
So again, a second welcome to those joining us now on livestream. I've just made a few introductory comments. You haven't missed much.
Ken, still talking.
So, yeah, there we go. So, at this point, I would like to sort of get the board's buy-in to my suggestions to how the meeting should run as far as the order of things, the presentation, the question period for the board and for the budget committee, and then for public comment to occur after that and to be limited because of the number of people here.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're all set with the process then. And so I'm going to turn this over to Will Gartley of Gartley and Dorsky, and Will can decide when Charlie and when Ben need to chime in. And again, this is an information gathering session for us, for the members of the board and the members of the budget committee to learn more about this line item in the Public Works budget. So, Will, thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you, Ken. I'm going to start off with just a little bit of history. We were hired by the town, actually, in early of 2016 to do the survey work and create that as-built plan that I've got up on the screen right now. So that shows the existing library, Lime Rock Street, Union Street, Central Street, Russell. It's basically in as-built condition. It has all the utilities, telephone poles, all the existing structures and sidewalks and that type of thing. So this was the plan that was created in anticipation of the town going through the RFP process in the spring of 2016 and that people would be able to use to base a new design on. Then in the spring of 2016, when Dick Reed was selected as the architect originally, Dick hired Gartley and Dorsky, and I started working with him and his team, which included landscape architect Michael King and also traffic engineer Randy Dunton from Gorel Palmer. At that time, one of the first plans that we came up with, which was mainly from Dick's office and his landscape architect, was this plan right here. So this had the Reed building, basically where the existing library is, and it kept Lime Rock Street pretty much the way it was, kept the intersection the way it was. And the idea there was that this could happen with or without making changes to the intersection. There wasn't a lot of talk initially, in the first, you know, month or so, about the intersection. They hired Gorel Palmer. They came to the site, did traffic counts at the intersection because everybody was kind of curious to what the best thing to do with this was, and DOT got involved. And so in May of 2016, an email was sent by the traffic engineer, Randy Dunton from Gorel Palmer, to the entire team that recommended that the intersection be changed to what you see outlined in red. And so this was just a really preliminary sketch saying, hey, I think this would be a better configuration. And he gave a list of reasons why. From there, the landscape architect created this plan, which is what everybody saw prior to the vote that happened later in 2016. And that was the intersection plan that is very similar to what we're working with now. This plan went to DOT. It got their approval. And then, as everybody knows, that plan was not voted for in June, and so there was a pause. In 2018, when the town hired Steve Smith to move forward with a new design, Steve then hired us, and we basically brought this plan forward and said, you know, here's what DOT agreed to. There's potential funding available if we include making some changes to the intersection. And then when Steve developed his footprint, we basically took that plan and modified it slightly to accept the new footprint, which is this plan here. So this is where we're at today. As you can see, the Union Street, Central, Russell and Lime Rock intersection is pretty much identical to what was recommended by the traffic engineer and accepted it from DOT at that time. I mean, we've definitely made some minor changes, and we're working now with Terrence Dewan Architects, landscape architects, to finalize the landscaping and that type of thing. So there's more to come with regards to landscaping. But this shows the new footprint that came from Stephen Smith Architect's office and the site layout. This has, oh, thank you, Jeff, this has a lower level that's accessed from Russell Ave with a few new, better delineated parallel parking spaces along Russell. This is access at grade, so it's only a few inches higher than the curb line at Russell Ave at this location. And then as you come up Lime Rock Street, which we're still showing is a two-way street, there's a pull-off and drop-off zone right in front of the library. There's one handicap parking space with a accessible ramp, I don't know where that marker is, and the front entrance and stairs right here, crosswalk that goes across, and then parking up Lime Rock. The heavy dash black lines that you see are the current, is the current location of Lime Rock Street. I know there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not this could be built without making the changes to Lime Rock, and so I highlighted where that is now so that you can see that it really does not fit or work at that location without making changes to Lime Rock Street. We're about as close to the stream as we can possibly be. It's only about 20, 25, actually, I don't even think it is 25 feet. I think it's 15 or 20.
Less than that.
Yeah. So we're really close to the stream. We've got this approved through DEP for permitting, but they do not want the building any closer to the stream than the existing building was, so that's been a goal all along. There's a fire hydrant right here that we have been just coordinating, actually, today with the fire chief that's going to move down here into this island. And we're also making some improvements to parking on Union Street and redoing the sidewalk along there. With regards to how the project has been discussed, I've got some other plans that have a lot of details, contours, utilities. I'm not sure that we need to get into that level of detail, but they're there if somebody has a question that relates to those. I do have a plan that we created a while ago. I'm struggling to see up there.
Yep, there you go.
That highlights how we've talked about budget for these different pieces. This area here, which is kind of a light purple, is what we've always talked about as being what was in the library portion of the project, the building portion of the budget. This area that, it's labeled as stream, I didn't mention that yet, but the, there's a retaining wall along that stream channel that is an old concrete and stone retaining wall that's failing. Part of it's caved in, part of it's leaning over. In some places, that channel's only nine inches wide now, and it clogs and overflows at different times, and it's a maintenance hassle for Public Works. But it's even more of a hassle for the neighbors because when that does plug and overflow, the water goes into their basement. So we've recommended that now that the building's gone and the access is easy, that we take that retaining wall out, lay that slope back, and riprap it and vegetate it so that it opens it up and eliminates that Public Works maintenance nightmare that's there now. It's going to have to be dealt with at some point because the wall's failing, so now's the time to do it. So we've kind of outlined that as, when we put it out to bid, that we're going to have that as an alternate, just so we can price it separately. So all of these things, in our mind, have been laid out this way so that we can keep track of pricing of the different portions of it. What's really in the dark gray here is the portion that we've submitted to DOT for their MPI program, which is their 50% match. That's the part of the project that we've told them is the intersection reconstruction. So it's the paving, the sidewalks, crosswalks, the ADA accessible markings, that type of thing, everything that has to do with making that change of the intersection where we're eliminating the island and changing where Lime Rock Street comes out onto Union. They've reviewed that plan. I actually got an update email from them this morning, and they apologized. They said that because of the administration change, there's been a lot of shuffling at DOT, they've got a new commissioner, a lot of people have changed jobs, they're a little behind. They told me they expected that we should have our formal acceptance in about a month and that they didn't see any reason why they wouldn't move forward with it. So, and once that, we started moving forward with this in 2018 again, and we made some minor changes, I've kept Gorel Palmer involved, looking at how we're doing the sidewalks, the crosswalks, the stop signs, all the side distances, just to make sure I have an outside party that isn't in town, involved with it in any way, looking at this from a technical perspective to make sure that we haven't missed anything. So we're going to do that one last time. They looked at it probably about six to nine months ago, and then we've made some more tweaks since then. So I'm going to have them review it one last time, just kind of as an independent check. But both the traffic engineer and DOT have so far blessed us. And then the blue area is what everybody's been referring to as the parking. But that also does include, obviously, some additional changes to Lime Rock Street. Because Lime Rock Street is actually right here now, and we're moving it, there is changes to the pavement through here, the grades through here, that need to be made in order to make this all work.
Just to reiterate and to repeat what Will said, Will has done his due diligence by going and having, it's called a peer review. And that's where he's laid himself out and said, this is what I've designed, comment on it, criticize it, tell me what's wrong with it, Will. And they've been very supportive of this as being the best solution for safety and functionality of this intersection.
We've also had DOT here at the town. We had a couple meetings with two or three representatives from DOT. So they've been involved right from the beginning, actually, since, I think, our first conference call with them was with the Dick Reed project was in June of 2016. I don't know if you want me to get into more detail than that or look at more technical stuff or?
I guess I would open it unless we want to ask Ben to come up and talk about the parking needs of the library at this point. I know Ben has some numbers. So Ben, could you do that? It's like, that's fine. There's a spot over by Stevie, actually, nobody's sitting there.
All right.
That's probably a good place for you to be anyway, but.
Yeah. So what we started doing in June of 2018 was actually counting cars in our parking lot. And I gave these stats out to everybody on the committee and the board. And so what we're doing is we're doing two things. One is very straightforward, one's a little less, but I'll explain it. We think anecdotally it's a good average to use. So what we're doing is we're actually counting the highest peak number of cars on any given day. So when you're looking at this and you see on June 20th, 2018, we had 18 cars in the parking lot at a single point in time. So that's what we were looking for because the sort of temporal nature of the library, people are coming in and out really fast, so we were just looking for the highest peak that we had. And then the second, I mean, there's a bunch of other numbers on this, and the way that that works out is those are, the adult visits are how many adults came into the building that day. And then we estimate that 80% of people that come to the library, of those adults, are coming one car to one person. It's probably higher, but we figured 80% was a good, a good number to use. And then you get over to the farther columns and you see, so our average high number, so that's our average peak of cars sort of all at one time for the couple of weeks that we did it in June, was 13.4. And then we estimate, again, that the average number of cars that come in on a daily during that month was 222, I mean, 122, sorry. So we've been doing that since, we've got a bunch of averages. The highest was in July, which makes sense, and that was 14, which coincidentally is the number of parking spaces that are planned out for us, so that's really quite perfect. And I mean, as you can see, that average, some days when we have events, it's much higher than 14. And then, you know, of course, the numbers have been going down through the winter. We've plateaued right now around nine. Nines are high average through the winter, and I think that that 14, 13, 14 will be the average that we have through the rest of the summer months, once we get data for those.
Yeah, I think at this point, we'll open up the questions from the board and from the committee.
I just had a question on your numbering.
Mm-hmm.
Do you count employee parking when you get these numbers?
No, we do not. And we normally have four to five employees that park in a back parking lot right now because we have it. We wouldn't have that here.
That's not delineated on the current plan?
No, that is not. So those.
They're not counted either.
No.
But are, is it part of the budget?
No, to give us employee parking is not involved in anything.
So my questions are only from a budgetary standpoint.
Yeah.
We have, on Lime Rock Street, we have 10 parking spaces?
14.
And we're feeling that that is sufficient for growth?
I hope so. Those are the only spots that I can delineate as library parking during library hours. The other stuff that's cleaned up around the street, you know, will be used when we need the overflow. But I hope so. I mean, I would love more parking.
I understand, but with the hotel coming to town and the restaurants being busy, I mean, I had to park way down on Lime Rock. I'm the last one here. So I understand there's not a lot of parking downtown. So I guess my question would be to Will and the architects, is there more parking space available in here or is this where, this is the ideal number we're looking at?
I think, I think that this is a compromise. I mean, you know, we've been hearing a lot of, a lot of different things, and you can see by what's shaded in green of what space is still available and.
Green spaces nice, Will.
Right. We've known that nobody wants to fill the park with parking. So in working with Ben and looking at those numbers, we've shown what they've thought the minimum was that they really needed.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. It's really more for Rick, you, and Mark, having to do with the budget. I am trying to remember from last year's budget, we had $200,000 in the budget line for parking, to increase the parking for the downtown area. And that would also go to help with the library.
There was.
But then we, but we didn't need it because we decided we couldn't get the library built on the November ballot. We knew it would have to go to June into the next financial year. So we decided we would push it until this year?
Yeah, the way that came out is there was a number in the budget and last year's budget, which was formulated around this time of the year. And at that time, we were still hoping that we would be able to go to the polls or the vote in June of 2018. And it became evident during the budget process that that wasn't going to happen because of various other external issues. And so that meant that that money was not going to be used during the current fiscal year.
All right. So let me follow up from there.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
My recollection is there was 200,000 that was specifically allocated in that budget for Lime Rock Street and the project surrounding the library.
Okay.
And as it wasn't going to happen immediately, we elected to remove it.
Right.
And that caused my, this year's questioning about the 370,000, which is a drastic jump from the 200 from last year.
Well, but I think, if I'm remembering correctly, and Rick can answer, I think the 200 was a net number last year. And so the net number, in other words, we didn't show an offsetting revenue because we weren't sure at that point. Whereas this year is the 370 is not a net number, it's a gross number.
Well, that assumes certain things that we need to get into.
Well, yeah, and I, again, I want to sort of follow up to all my questions. So at that point, we had the very clear idea that, you know, the parking was separate from the intersection, that was separate from the building. So when did these things all get blended into one project? Because when we started out, we initially thought we had kind of three separate projects.
And I think we still kind of do to a certain extent.
Well, that's, that's one of the questions that we raised last, last week, that we understand, we've understood from some informal conversations with you guys, that there were some grade changes that need to be made in order to make, you know, in order to do the construction. That totally understand. We understand that there's an intersection, and we understand that there's parking. And so some of us sort of view this as three separate projects. And the question is not so much, at least my question is, not so much along the lines of do we, do we delete parking, but can we put them into, can we put certain projects into a different fiscal year so that we don't completely delete our road construction in the rest of the town this year? So anyway, that's.
And maybe you guys can address that one to a certain extent.
That's actually an important question.
And I think, and Charlie too, if you can talk about the bidding process because we've, even though, and you're right, there are sort of three separate projects here, but we've put them into one bidding document, hopefully to save a little bit of money on the bidding.
Let's stay with the first question that was brought up by Deborah, and Bettina will respond to that.
You go ahead.
Well.
This is this timing of when June 30th, 2020 hits.
We've already gone through and set up a schedule for this project, not only through bidding, but also through construction so that we can allocate certain funds and we know how much money the town will need on hand through each quarter of the fiscal year. And there will be some portion of the intersection and the parking that can be done in the next fiscal year.
Fiscal '21.
That, that number is something that we can look at and we can determine. The greater portion of it will be done in this fiscal year for certain, but there is some that we can delay until next year. Yes, ma'am. As far as how we're bidding, does that answer your question?
And not to interrupt you.
Yes, ma'am.
Even if it starts, I'm not a ma'am. She's a ma'am.
You're older than me. You're not older than me. That's right. You should be calling me Mr. Bettini.
We digress. If you start to lay out that schedule thinking about your June 30th fiscal year end 2020, and then when you're, now you're cutting it tight on when invoicing hits versus your fiscal year end and cash flow, but if you start to think about work that is done in June invoiced in July or August, that starts to lean into fiscal '21.
That's correct. So there'll be work done a month prior, even 45 days prior, that could be put into the next fiscal year, which will be '21. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I've got one for Ben if we're done sort of on this one.
Go ahead.
Jump around.
Ben, coming at you.
Hey, let's do it.
Using your, your June statistics for parking.
Yeah.
And these numbers don't include employees.
Yes.
How many employees do you have there on any given June day?
Yeah, so we have four full-time employees that are there all the time, and then we typically have one part-time person that is there for a portion of the day. So.
So we.
Four to five, depending, like four and a half throughout the whole day.
So we have 14 spaces adjacent to the library, based on the rendition we have.
Mm-hmm.
Where are you going to instruct your people to park?
I don't instruct my people on where to park. I never did when we were there.
Well, I'm just saying if we're trying to.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand. I understand what you're getting at.
If we're trying to make the most of what we have.
Yes.
Well, I think Ben's not the one that's.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not going to dictate where somebody parks if it's rainy, if it's cold, like a day like this, if they want to park relative, like in the top section of that, that would be fine. When we were there, I would park down behind the Opera House, and so would many other of the employees, and we just figured we would walk in there and save those spots for patrons. You know, when it's pouring and cold, it's a tough choice to make, and sometimes we would park there, though.
That's why I use June instead of December.
Yeah. In June, I would park far away. The walk would be nice and pleasant.
There was, there was another thing that you also did, the, on Wednesday nights when you're open, the, the person that was closed, the people who were closing on Wednesday night.
Oh, yeah, they would park close.
They were encouraged to park a little closer. Because there are, I mean, I don't have my hands right on the parking analysis, but there's a huge number of parking spaces that are available throughout the village that are a little bit of a walk, but they're doable. As Ben said, he, he trucked up here, he and Ben trucked up here all winter.
Yeah, we'd park down there, yeah. And I mean, it's just one of those things that we try to do to be nice, to make it work, because there was very limited parking there. I mean, if, if I could park there throughout the winter, I would gladly park closer to the building.
My other question is for the chair and Will, perhaps, or whomever is doing the screening for the landscaping. We have a property owner that specifically wanted or asked for additional screening so that the headlights from such a plan wouldn't be shining over into their property. Is that something that's being considered in this?
Yes.
Is there money somewhere for that?
Well, it'll be.
There's an allowance for the.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I'm asking for the property owners, that's why I'm.
That, you know, she came to the meeting, addressed it, and.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure it was still something.
Yeah, because those parking spaces are facing.
So one of the things that we were, we were considering was, as we've already discussed, splitting expenses from one fiscal year to the next. It sounds like that's almost a certainty because of the construction schedule, but if we're actually going to be budgeting, we'd have to understand what those dollars are going to be. So is that something that you could provide to us at some, if not tonight, at some point? What, how much you think would happen in this fiscal year dollar-wise and how much would happen in this next fiscal year?
Specifically for the intersection of parking or for the project as a whole?
No, the intersection of parking only because, pardon me for stepping on you, but the other, the building is funded by the bond and by the donation. So what we're dealing with in the budget issue is just the intersection of the parking.
And we don't need a number tonight, but.
Yeah, it'll be important next week when we, when we actually get to put numbers in.
Similar to where we've given you the information for the fiscal, the budget related to the quarters in the fiscal year for the building, we'll be able to break that out for the quarters in the fiscal year for the intersection and the parking separately.
Okay.
And just please note that not only are there 14 spaces up on Lime Rock Street, but Will's design has accommodated additional spaces on Union and Russell Avenue. So there is more than 14 spaces of parking that's available for the library.
That's great. That's where I wanted to go. So that's one of the places I want to go. So on Union Street, so tell me how many, how many parking spaces are being accommodated in this hole here?
Well, I'm going to defer that to Will because this is his plan. Will, additional parking outside of Lime Rock Street?
Well, the word additional, I mean, right now, people park on Union Street, people park on, on Russell. So really, what we've done is just made improvements to that situation. They're not really designated very well. There's not really the amount of space that you'd like to have for two-lane traffic to go by, parallel parking spaces. So all we've really done is bumped them into the park a little bit to make those more designated and give more space for them. Kind of the same thing with Russell. Russell got, reworked a little bit down here because of that intersection change, and we've added, made the sidewalk and the curb there a little bit better. So it's, that's, that's the improvements on Russell and Union.
They're not only number improvements to the parking, but it's a safer parking environment as well.
Right. So also, is there parking across from where the cars are butting into the park or facing into the park, the right side, the far side of the blue?
Parallel parking.
Yeah. Is there parallel parking there?
Where are you, so here's.
On the opposite side of Lime Rock Street.
Oh, sorry, you're not, yeah, yes, on the opposite side of Lime Rock Street.
Opposite side of the perpendicular parking, is there parallel parking on there?
No, no.
There's no parallel parking on that.
There's not enough, not enough space there.
None of space.
We would have to move Lime Rock Street further into the park to accomplish that.
Okay.
The only other parking space is right where I've got that little hand signal. There's a one handicap space.
The handicaps.
And the drop-off space at the front of the library where he's, his hand is.
Right, right there.
Okay. And sorry if this upsets anyone, but it's just a question. I've heard people talk about in the past making Lime Rock Street a one-way street. I don't live on Lime Rock, so I don't know, you know, but is, is that something that would change that scenario in terms of being able to have additional parking?
You might be, if you, if you made it one way, you might, might have space for parallel spaces on the other side. It's really steep there, though. So to be parking straight up and down that hill is a little bit difficult, and, and car doors are going to tend to want to close on you. So I've tried to avoid parallel parking on that part of the street for. So I've tried to avoid parallel parking on that part of the street for that reason.
What Will's done in his plan, and you'll explain it, Will, is that you can't move to parallel parking on Lime Rock and take the perpendicular way, you lose spaces. But also, you'll, it, it's more dangerous and cumbersome to get in and out of your car. Will, explain what you've done.
Well, it's, well, let me go to. It is hard to see, but, so we've regraded this area, and this part of the park where the parking's going to be is going to, is going to need to be filled. And we've twisted the contours so that when you turn into the park and park in those parking spaces, it's not as steep as Lime Rock Street across your car. So it's, it's definitely tight, and, you know, it's been a challenge to try to fit everything in there, but this parking is definitely easier to maneuver than if they were parallel going straight up and down the hill.
To follow up on Deb's question, and I hadn't thought about this, from an engineer's standpoint, is there any benefit to having that area one-way?
You know, we, we actually did a version of that once, and not necessarily.
And I'll chime in, and we did discuss this in a couple of meetings about making it one-way, and the thought, I think at the time of the discussion was, if you make it, engineer it for one-way right now, you can never go back to being a two-way. If you engineer it big enough to be a two-way, then perhaps if traffic patterns change in the future or something, then you would be able to change it to a one-way street if you wanted to, but you can't go the other way. So this, this plan, I think, kept our options open.
Makes sense.
Stevie?
Ben, I guess, or maybe Will, I think the question you asked Jeff about the changes and the additional parking, like on Russell and Union, and Ben mentioned, there was a key word there, designated for library parking during library hours, and I assume that's only those 14 places, not Russell and Union. So it really, it's additional parking if there's not a concert or something going on, but if the library's open, it's only those 14 spaces that would be designated as parking spaces for the library.
And my questions are only having to do with the budget, and making sure that.
I know, yeah.
We're, we're budgeting for the right number of spaces for now and the immediate future.
That's my own question on that. But since I do have the mic, can I ask Will another question?
Absolutely.
Well, you'd made a comment, and I didn't get it all written down. In regards to the intersection work, you said the DOT is going to share in, you'd said some things, and then sidewalks and crosswalks?
Right, so basically, everything that is in the dark gray shaded area is what we're asking DOT to participate in.
Okay. And so. The, the reason I ask is that we were given a budget that talked about the intersection work, and then parking and sidewalks.
Yep.
As a separate category, and where my assumption is the sidewalks and parking will be the last thing done.
It's probably, yeah, definitely.
So that, that's a piece that will be in the next budget?
There are, the sidewalk in both the parking and in the intersection, so.
Right.
There's, there's two different areas.
And they'll be done.
The state is participating in the intersection work only, which includes sidewalk and the, the intersection work and the improvements to the parking in front of the building and on, on Union.
And maybe part of that will be done during the construction of the, of the intersection because of the grading and all of that.
Yes, sir.
But if we were looking at the, what I am looking at is the $150,000 with the $40,000 TIF, $110,000 that was labeled in our book as parking and sidewalks.
That, that was the area in the blue.
That's all in the blue.
Right.
And then the other question that you mentioned, I had, was when you talk about changing the retaining wall to fix the stream, and I agree with all that.
Yep.
Is that part of the budget we're looking at, or is that part of the bond issue?
It's actually part of this year's current budget.
So that's not our discussion for next year's budget? Okay.
You mean, it's not part of the $370,000 number? It's something else?
It's already, it's in this year.
No, no, I understand that we've got to fix it, I get it, but it's not in that $370,000? It's elsewhere.
It's in this year's budget, the current budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, this year's budget, gotcha, this year.
That work will be done first.
Gotcha, okay, right, right.
For purposes of this budget, that one's a freebie.
Yeah, great, great, great.
It's free.
I have a couple of questions, if it's my turn.
Jeff, are you done?
So at 150 less 40, we can pretty much assume that would be expended in the next budget year.
Not all of it.
Not all of it.
Some of it. We'll come up with a forecast for how that's going to hit.
So it's not, it's not just A and B, it's going to be a blend?
No, it's going to, it's going to be some percentage is going to hit in fiscal '20, some of it's going to hit in fiscal '21.
The number we told Jeff we'd be getting.
Right. I was going to start to pencil it out, and Charlie said, please don't do that right now.
I asked her not to give me a number now.
Don't do that.
All right, okay, thank you, that's the number.
So we will, we'll work on that over the next few days for you.
That's the number.
Can I have Charlie make one comment? As you're thinking about these four pieces up here, and as you start to talk about how we're putting this bid together, why we're putting them, why we think there's a benefit of lumping them all together for contracting cost savings reasons, do you want to go through that?
And the four pieces, as, as Bettina alluded to, are the parking, the intersection, the stream, and the building. They can be bid as four separate projects, but it's going to increase the risk of the town to have a higher number come back, and also multiple contractors possibly come back. The goal is to put alternates in, so the base of the bid would be the structure. Alternate to that is the parking, the intersection, and the stream work. There's additional reasons for that, is that it's coming from all different budgets and funds, and we want to make sure it's very clear when we send in invoices and requisitions where that money is coming from, so there's no, it's clear, there's a clear direction on where you have to pay from. But it will also be an opportunity for a general contractor to bid this project out, knowing that he can get this whole project, and it's cost savings to you.
So what you're saying is by us putting $220,000 in there for the parking, is they know that's their limit?
We're, there's not $220,000 for the parking, right now, we're talking about $150,000 for the parking, and the remainder is going into the intersection. So that's why, it's very confusing.
Right, there's 370, 150 of its, you know, TIF and reimbursement, but there's $220,000 that's going to be used to improve.
That is correct.
The street.
That is correct.
And that's what they now know they've got to work with when they bid the project.
Well, they know that by watching this, but there's no guarantee that's the number it's going to come out to.
Well, it's probably going to be.
If they want the project, they make them a little.
Probably going to be close.
Well, but there's the other element of if you can have one contractor come in to do this site work and bid it, you're not bidding four teams, four mobilizations, and they're bidding an overall scope of work.
And he has the ability to work on the structure, work on the, the utilities to the structure all at one time, instead of having to delineate four separate contracts.
And I want to speak to Jeff's question a little bit more on that blue area up there, and you guys jump in, because you can say it better than I am. And one of the reasons that that entire budget can't be put off until the next budget year is that some of that blue area does involve relocation, regrading of the road up there, of the street. So it's not all just parking, that is part of the street work up there, too.
One of the things I would like to just.
Can, can somebody confirm that for me, or talk to me about that, because I want to understand that better.
What's it, so.
The, the blue area is not just parking, it also includes some changes to Lime Rock Street.
Right, that's correct.
But they're all changes that have to be made prior to the construction of the building? Have to? Emphasis on have to.
Well, when you say, it's, this, that, Lime Rock Street as it is today is going to get wiped out as soon as they start construction, because we're only five feet from the edge of that pavement to where that foundation hole has to be dug, and there's blasting that's going to be involved.
Right.
So Lime Rock Street is going to change. The elevation of it changes, and the location of it changes. So at this point, right where the hand is, there's going to be an offset.
Yep.
There's going to be an offset.
Yep.
New Lime Rock Street is further into the park, existing Lime Rock Street is closer, is further to the east.
Okay.
And so at some point, they've got to, we've got to move and regrade Lime Rock Street on the upper portion to match.
Got you. So that's a regrading that has to be done prior to the construction.
Well, not prior, if it's all part.
All part of the construction.
Before it's complete.
Okay, well, that's very important, prior to the construction, during, or when it's complete. And this is what we really need to understand, because the budget, without getting into detail, the budget, and, and it's just the town manager putting forth a budget to us to meet LD1 so that we don't have much of an increase in our mill rate. But right now, the budget that was presented to us takes away $285,000 requested by the Public Works Director, okay, for doing paving in this town, completely wipes it out. And, but then gives all of the funds requested here for the library project. So this concerned some of us last week, it continues to concern some, some of us. And so we have to, I'll tell you my opinion, is that we need to balance this. It can't all go into the library. Eventually, sure, the, the parking's going to be there, but you have to help us figure out how we can divide these up into different fiscal years, because we have a few roads that if they don't get fixed, then we may lose them. And so you know better than anybody, Will, that the numbers we're given is it costs $115,000 a mile to pave a road and maintain it, just to maintain what's there. If we lose it because we don't maintain it, it costs almost double, $233,000 a mile. And so the concern that some of us have is we're not trying to take away, or I'm not trying to take away parking from the library. What I'm trying to do is be fiscally responsible and say, some of this has to go into our roads. And if that means some of this work doesn't get done quite as quickly as, as it could have otherwise, or it has to go into another fiscal year, so be it. Because if I have to vote on this, which I do, that's the way I'm going to vote.
Well, ma'am, if, and not to cut you off, sir, but we had just agreed that Bettina and I will go back.
No, I hear you, Charlie.
And give you a breakdown for the intersection and the parking, and what the funds would be needed for each quarter.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, but what I'm trying to get across is that when we talk about, you know, that's why I was quizzing Will about, about, I, does, does that blue part on Lime Rock have to be done before construction? And then I heard it's during construction. And what I'm saying is, anything that can be pushed into the fiscal year, if it's questionable, you guys have to work with us to push it into the fiscal year.
Fiscal '21.
Yes. Because, into the next fiscal year, because otherwise, we don't have, unless, I mean, they're, sure, we can go, we can dip into the unfunded balance, which is our savings account in essence for the town, that has problems. Sure, we can raise taxes, I mean, is that really what our taxpayers want us to do? So we need to, we need to figure out how we can make this work creatively.
But let the first step be us giving you the quarters, and then it's a dialogue after that on how we can better it.
Yeah, I think.
And we're willing to make that happen if we can.
That's what I mean.
It's just a breakdown of how things can happen.
You're going to see, Will and, and I just did a sidebar, which means Charlie's going to yell at me again. We're going to look at a couple of options, which is how in the existing plan, this can cash flow out over fiscal '20 and fiscal '21, and to see how that could spread. And the other option is, if we're thinking on the current construction schedule that the library would open sometime around August 2020, that's fiscal '21, but obviously you're two months in, et cetera, how much of the parking would be done? I don't think there's a lot of opportunity to scale that any differently as far as timing. The question is, can that intersection work? How much of it needs to be done upfront versus construction opening, and how much of that could phase into 2020, fiscal '21, sorry? And Will's going to look at that tomorrow.
Absolutely, that's what I would ask you guys to do.
That's what we need to do, and just speak to Deborah's other issues, and when we get into the budget next week, we have all these budget lines we have to look at. So we're just trying to gather as much information about the potential for this budget to how, how we can spread it out, and if we can push some into the next fiscal year, that will help us a little bit this year.
Definitely.
But we want to, like Deborah says, I think we want to have the best information we possibly have as to what we have to get done in order to proceed with the current schedule of the building. Because if the building's, Charlie's talked to us about this before, if the building schedule gets pushed back, that costs us more money, and we don't want to do that.
I have a que, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, my only question was just about whether the intersection part, funding for the, or the, sorry, the cost of the intersection could be borne in the next fiscal year. You're already addressing that, so my question's.
Well, and the question is, how much of it has to be done to, to get this building open versus how much of it could be scheduled to be done back end of this thing?
And using creative construction scheduling, there's a way that we might be able to, and with the three of us will sit down and discuss it, on how we can still get the building open, still have access to the building, have it safe for the public, yet complete the remainder of the project, which is intersection and parking in fiscal '20.
Bingo.
Quick question for Charlie, and I hate to ask this question, because I know you're.
Then don't ask it, though.
You have to, I don't hate it that much. Because I know the documents, the bid documents are going to go out in about two weeks or so.
Two or three weeks, yes, sir.
Is there any possibility that any more value engineering could be done to the plans as you have them now, so that the 3.5 million for the entire project could be absorbed, some of that extra cost for the parking and everything could be absorbed into the building budget?
Yeah, go ahead, Bettina's going to cut you off.
If you yelled at me, I'm yelling at you. Make sure you use the right verbs here.
I will. I'll be very careful and choose my words wisely. We're doing our due diligence, Phi is doing his due diligence in creating an up-to-date estimate on the latest set of drawings, which are not the final 100% set of construction documents, but the latest set of drawings, which is well further along than the original drawings that we estimated, and all the other people that we had estimating estimate.
These are the bid documents?
The bid, the, we're closer to bid documents than we were during the initial estimates that were provided. And we are, or we will be as a result of this meeting, not, we haven't yet, but we will be, looking at whether or not there is an opportunity for a portion of the parking to be included in the building budget. But we don't know that firmly right now, but.
What he's saying is.
I'm being very careful with my words.
Yeah, no, yeah, which is, it's going to be interesting to see, as the plans come, as you start to go through construction documents, and you go from conceptual and renderings at the beginning to more final design, you get more and more details, and you can basically funnel and get tighter and tighter towards understanding your estimate. So there, you're going to be with a bigger range at the beginning, and you get tighter as this goes, as the, it gets more detailed on the drawings that we're estimating off of, and this is, Phi is estimating, we're not going to be a bidder on this, but we can have a running estimate of what we think. We're getting more confident that our estimates coming through, that unless something is crazy, and we've made a material mistake, that we're on, we're in good, really good shape with this thing. And that's where we're stopping.
Yeah, and we don't want to say anymore, because these are going out the bid, so leave it at that.
Honestly, we'd rather come back and positively surprise you than really.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So, Will, you had said that, you gave us the DOT, the, the email that you got from the, from the DOT today. today. And you had mentioned that you, it says, and you said that you would expect that there would probably be formal acceptance of this within a month or so. So, could you explain to me what exactly formal acceptance means? I mean, does that mean that it gets on the DOT schedule to perform that work in the next fiscal year? Does the town get paid back in the next fiscal year? Could you go through those steps for me?
Right. So, the way this program works is the DOT doesn't actually do any of the work. It's totally up to the town to have it designed, bid, and built. They just review and approve, and then contribute to the funding. So, 50% of whatever that bid is. Now, we've given them the estimate of the 220 that you guys have been talking about for the area that's in gray. And, you know, we'll know what that real number is when, and that's another reason for bidding it, the way we're bidding it, is we need to keep that DOT portion of the project separate.
We made that decision in the REED plan, as I remember.
Right, right. We started that process back then. So, once they've approved that, and we're the first in line, so we were the first ones to submit for this program and for the money that's available. That's why the email is relatively positive and confident that we're in the queue, and they've reviewed it, so they don't see any reason why we won't get the funding. Which means it'll be in the next fiscal year.
In--
In 2020. The money will be available in 2020, spring of 2020.
Fiscal '20. So, as you, if you has your expenditures out, the reimbursement should be coming in in the same fiscal year?
It's a real problem if it doesn't, you know, because we're, that's baked into the budget as $110,000 revenue. And if it's not, we have a problem.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, that's, we've been trying to get into the right cycle. I mean, the difficulty with the DOT is if we had gotten in too early, which we almost did, then the money would have been available, and we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have been able to spend it and use it. We would have lost it. So, I've been, like, on the shelf here with them, whether or not we were officially submitted or not, until we thought this was real. Right. We needed to know that this was going to happen. So, it was the second the vote passed, then we submitted the official application. And I do know that we were the first ones in.
What's the total balance in that MDI program? What is the state allocated for?
You know, I'm not sure. It's the same program that Rockland used in the old county road, when they rebuilt that a couple of years ago. So, it can be a lot, but it's not the same every year.
I think, as I recall, when we met with the DOT folks, this project for them was a small project.
Yes, definitely.
A very, very small project, so it was not one that was going to break their bank by any means.
And I think you said at the beginning that, you know, you made the point that Lime Rock has to be changed, and that there is no way to avoid that. And I don't think that, just so that you know, I don't think that anybody here on the board was suggesting that that not happened. What we were suggesting, or--
Timing.
In our discussion last week, it's all about timing. I mean, for me, it's all about timing. I can't speak for my colleagues, but to me, it's about timing.
Well, certainly, if we get a number next week from you guys that allows us to move some portion of this into the next fiscal year, that's going to help us with developing this fiscal year's budget. There's no question about that.
Sure.
And then there will be four members of this board that will be on next year, myself being the one that won't be. And you guys will just have to have a long memory to make sure that you--
Yeah, that's the challenge, is that you make sure you--
--balance in the next fiscal year. Because this board can't commit the next board to do anything.
So, I think that's important. That's an important point, because I think there have been a lot of people that have been working on this for a long time, and may have some anxiety about, you know, today's promise not coming, not being delivered next year. So, given how this is all going to be laid out, is it even possible for us not to finish the work next year, once we start some of these projects? I mean, what would we be left with if we didn't allocate funds next year to finish the parking lot, for example?
No asphalt.
No asphalt.
Well, yeah.
It's a little bit more than that. It's a little bit more than that.
No curbing, no, I mean, no finish.
I'm really trying to get at, what's the, what it really is a likelihood that we would not, we can't make promises for next year, right? But what's the likelihood of us not finishing this, right?
Lime Rock Street is, the grades on Lime Rock Street are changing because the intersection is changing, obviously. And as Will will attach, you'll have a foot or two, a foot and a half difference between where the dark gray is to the blue. And you have to blend it all in, so it's matched evenly and it's safe. And that also allows for access to the structure. Can they be done independently? The building can go up independent of Lime Rock being completed, yes. But there will be certain things that will have to be qualified to be finished in order to have access.
Just so folks understand on the budget end of things, and I'm not suggesting this, I'm just letting you know, we could put the entire amount in this year's budget, and then whatever wasn't expended could be encumbered and laid over into the following fiscal year's budget. So, I'm not suggesting that, but it's just, it's another way that it could be handled, if there was concern about the following board not following through.
We need more time to get the council down to the board. Any further questions?
Can I just, Charlie, Charlie and Will, what do you think is the price difference? You know, when a contractor's coming in, and they're going to have these kind of limits of what they can do when, instead of coming in and doing all the work, whatever is the best time, the most ideal time for them to do the work, as opposed to having to do it on a specific schedule, is there any cost differential? Is it going to add to our cost doing it that way?
Certain portions of the work that's outlined in the different colors, especially the blue and the gray, will be required to be done during the construction of the structure. But the, as far as completing it, or other areas that we can be more creative in delaying, there's not, there should not be a cost differential, especially if it's included in the bid documents.
It's included, okay.
Which we can do. As a result of this meeting, it's good fact-finding lesson for us as well. So, we'll make sure to take that into consideration when the bid documents are let.
If I could just add a little bit, I mean, it's as much about having people have to mobilize and remobilize. But these lines are drawn kind of straight across the road and straight across the sidewalk. You don't really want to work that way, right? I mean, when they come in to do the sidewalks, you want to keep going. You want to do all the sidewalks at the same time. You don't want to have abrupt stop or start to one of those parts of the project. So, I mean, if we delay the sidewalks until the next year, then that's fine. They can come in and do them all in July of 2020. But you don't want to do some of them, stop and wait a few weeks, and then start again. That does add cost.
And I wouldn't do that. The finishes, definitely, asphalt, sidewalk, curbs, those would be delayed. And that's what I'm thinking, as we're all discussing this, would be delayed until the next fiscal year. The underground, the utilities, all the services, especially those that feed the structure, or have to be moved as a result of the new intersection, that's something that you'll see in this fiscal year.
Rating.
Grading. Grading would be done--
Some of the grading.
Yeah, it'll be kind of off, on the cusp of both, this year and next year.
I just, I can't urge you enough to try to be creative in trying to push as much into the fiscal, the next fiscal of the year as you can, at least for, I think, I think it's going to help get approval, I think ultimately, of the budget at the town meeting, it's my opinion. Certainly going to help get my approval, and maybe some other people on the board.
I'm confident we'll be creative enough for you, ma'am.
Debra, of the 285 that you said was the road budget, how much would you like to protect over there versus hypothetically?
Well, but that's not something we necessarily need to get into.
I heard you, Mark.
Yeah, I know, you know what?
Because that involves so many other budget lines. I don't know that we want to get into that discussion.
This was the line she mentioned.
I know. But there's, that's coordinated with how much we use from the UFP. It's coordinated from how much we change the excise tax estimates. It's a lot of other things that go into that. So, I'd rather not get into that tonight, if that's okay.
We'll do our due diligence.
I'd like you to be as creative as you can be.
We'll do our due diligence in that.
Right, right. And then you guys can do with what you want.
Right, exactly. And we'll have a discussion. And our discussion will run the gamut from funding the whole thing, as it's in the project proposal right now, or taking the recommendation of dropping it down a little bit to perhaps something else.
And just know, our creativity will be based on reality. It's not going to be something we just want you to hear.
No, no.
And then come back to the till later. It's going to be well-thought-out and presented right--
I know you want to know, Charlie. I know that won't happen.
It's not going to happen.
Seavey.
Just one quick question. In terms of changing the fiscal year things, my whole concern has always been with the library, has been accessibility. And by delaying the fiscal year and the expenses, does that in any way impact if the library indeed opens in August of 2020? Is that, will the project not be finished then?
That date might get pushed.
We'll always make certain that if the library, not if, because I'm fairly confident in what I do, when the library is completed in August, or early September, but late August, if the surrounding areas, such as the parking and intersection are not completed, we will have a safe area for all the people to go in and enjoy that library. The parking and the intersection, should they be delayed because of the issues we're dealing with, is not going to change the opening of that library or the enjoyment of the building.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, we'd be looking at a delay measured in weeks or months, not longer than that.
You're looking at a delay, if there is a delay, measured in probably months. Not many months, but you're looking at if it's, if the intersection and parking are completed in August, it'll be September, October. Definitely before the winter.
Prior to winter.
Okay.
Yes.
Because that's important.
This is all going to be about when your expenditures--
Exactly.
--finish a project in August 2020.
Any further questions from the board or from the budget committee?
It's all about timing, when to finish.
Do you feel like they have a handle on that? Better have, looking over to these guys who really wanted a lot of information last time. Do you guys feel like you have the information you need right now?
When we give you the quarter, the fiscal, the quarterly analysis of what expenditures you're going to need, that's starting a dialogue. And that's where you'll be able to say, "You can live with it. Can you do this?" It's a team effort, where we're trying to make it work for the town.
Right.
Because Will has done an exemplary job in making this a safe and a functional intersection for the library, and the town of Rockport.
Okay. Any further questions, board or budget committee? Okay, if not, then we can move and have, Charlie, did you want to say something?
No, sir. With Bettina.
We can move to public comment. And as we agreed, each person wishing to comment needs to come up to the podium. You need to introduce yourself and state your residence address, where you live in Rockport. And I am going to run my little timer here for two minutes each, for people to make a comment. And if you could state at the outset where you stand on this budget proposal, that would be helpful to the board as well, so we get an idea of the sentiment.
I knew you couldn't do that on your phone.
So, at this point, if anybody, and if there are no questions, then we can all go home. If somebody wants to come up and make a comment, then feel free and go ahead and introduce yourself.
And we'll try to limit it to the budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're talking about the budget here. So, if anybody has any comments on the budget, or the information we've heard tonight, then I think that that's all fair.
I don't, I don't accept that limitation. I just, I think that, you know, you've heard me say before that the whole issue of the transparency of the parking and all that needs to be, people have to have an opportunity to comment on that. So, I just, I wouldn't put the, two minutes, but I think they should use their two minutes the way they wish.
Talk about anything they want to. Okay.
No, library, okay? Come on.
Okay. The podium is open for anybody who wishes to stand up and say something.
Never shy. My name is Ames Curtis. I'm a resident of West Rockport. And I've been a very strong proponent of the RES site for this library, for a lot of the reasons that are being brought up tonight, in terms of safe parking, intersections, accessibility to people, and so forth. I think the cost overrun that's projected right now, $370,000, was not made transparent to the residents of Rockport. I think the posters that were put up in favor of the new library on the former site showed parking, intersection change, as well as the building. And a lot of people voted in a positive way for that, because they thought all of those costs were going to be included in the bond, as well as the donations of $2 million. I also think that there's been a lot of expenditure from the town that didn't have to occur, that we could have saved. An example of that is when the engineering team presented the fact that the old library had mold and structural deficits. They projected at that time, it would cost the town $15,000 to demolish that building. We've waited and waited, shouldn't have, but waited and waited until the costs were over $30,000 to do that. My personal belief is that that was purposely done to leave the old library there as an icon or symbol of that's where the library should be located. I don't know how, what you plan, even if you move things into a different fiscal year, please start being transparent with the people in this town. We pay for these things at some point in time. And I'd rather people know right up front, as clearly as possible, what's expected and anticipated in the cost of this project, so we can vote with a clear mind about whether we're willing to proceed, not willing to proceed, willing to make changes, whatever is required. And I think the unfairness and unfair process of this whole project really leaves people questioning how much they can trust the select board, how much they can trust people who have been theoretically instrumental in moving this forward. I have a write-up I'll just give to the select board members, and to anyone else who might be interested. I don't have that many copies. But I at least want people to hear loud and clear my personal opinion.
Thank you. Okay.
I have to get up next, after this one. This is the first time in five or six years that Ames Curtis and I have been on the same, have the same position on something relative to this library. And I have the same reaction as Ames, that you have, you sort of bait and switch us here. We agreed that there's a $1.5 million library to build on that site. And now, you tell us that you can't build the library you designed without spending another $370,000. It doesn't work. The building doesn't work. You can't meet ADA requirements without spending, what you're saying, $370,000. I think that's, that just really, I have been accused by a couple of people in the last week of being disingenuous. Ben was saying I'm disingenuous because I do this, I do that. Another fundraiser committee member said I've been disingenuous by what I wrote to some people yesterday. I feel you're being very disingenuous by now coming, telling this very slick, very well-prepared, very well-orchestrated story, that why all this fits, and it's natural, and it's needed, and it's going to be beautiful, but it's going to cost 1.87 million. I think that's irresponsible. And then the last thing I wanted to say, Ben, in addition to your numbers, your numbers, I agree with what you, everything you said about your numbers, and with parking. But if you take those numbers and analyze them a little bit further, rather than looking at just the number of, the maximum number of cars on given days, you find out that on average, you have three cars parked in that parking lot every day. On average, you drive by, you're going to see three cars. You're going to see four cars in the, in the staffman, and you're going to see cars out front. You have more cars by staff than you have by patrons, on an average day. You have 54% of the time, you have fewer than 10-car maximums. Fewer than 10-car maximum, 54% of the days. 92% of the days, you have fewer than 16 cars maximum. You've got 22-car parking places between, within 75 steps. Camden Library has 13 parking places within 75 steps. Camden Library has five times the traffic visitors, as does Rockport Library. They have no more parking within 70, they have fewer parking spots than you're planning within 75 steps. You take, on big events, you've got 183 cars parked in our town when the library, when the Opera House is built. We have room for 183 cars without making one change in any streets. Oh, yes, unsafe, because there's parallel parking on an incline. Camden Library has parallel parking on inclines, and part of their parking is on Route 1, with 18-wheelers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Budgetary questions that I think to the budget committee, and probably to Rick Bates, that would be really easy to answer. What would be the monthly or annual cost of the 1.5 million dollar bond to the taxpayers? What's the annual cost?
The annual cost, I don't, Megan's in the back. She can, she's got to look it up.
No idea?
Oh, yeah. Megan's in the back.
So, while she's looking that up, what's the cost of being in the temporary facility for the library currently?
$36,000 a year.
Okay. So, which is greater, the annual cost of servicing the bond or the rent?
The servicing the bond.
Is more. So, what's the big hurry? So, the budget committee, every year that we delay, we're saving money, in effect, because we're not taking on that bond. I know eventually you have to do that, because you want to build the library. But the point is, there's no incentive to rush the project from a financial perspective. We're not wasting money in the temporary facility, okay? There is an alternative scheme for the site that, at least the Parks Committee has looked at thus far. I don't know if anyone's going to speak. No one in the town has looked at it. As many of you know, I approached the select board over the past two years, jumping up and down, saying, "I've got another idea for the library building that I think would work better, and furthermore, would save half a million dollars, without giving up any square footage." Is it worth saving half a million dollars? This is a budget question to you. The select board said, "We don't want to hear it. We don't want to see it. We don't want to look at it. We've hired our architect. Thank you very much." There is also a site plan that is being circulated, the one that the Parks Committee looked at last week, that I think conservatively, conservatively saves $100,000, and is more convenient and vastly safer. And I think any person in this room who compared the two schemes, including Will Gartley, who I know has invested a lot of time in getting the current scheme to where it is, would agree with it. Any of you individuals, if you saw the two side by side, would see the advantages. And I think you gentlemen, and anyone who's concerned about the finances, would also recognize the fact that it saves money. If you have the option to save money, what are you doing railroading this process forward? It's not financially responsible. And I don't think it's responsible of the select board to say, "We're not interested in your ideas. We're not interested in saving half a million dollars. We don't even want to compare it." Is it fear that it might actually be true? Is it fear that they might actually be on the wrong track with this site plan and with the building design? the building design? Is that what it is? Is that what the motivation is for not looking? It would be so easy for Charlie and Bettina, for Phi, to price an alternative site plan at the same time that they price this one. It would be much easier for the bidders to have two side by side and run the numbers. And wouldn't it be nice to know? And what does it cost you?
Okay, two minutes.
Thanks.
I've been generous, so, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I keep hearing about this alternative site plan, and I keep hearing that, that, that there was some support, that, that Will or others had supported it. Can somebody talk about this alternative site plan a little bit, just so, again, to be transparent, I just want to hear about...
I haven't seen it, and I think the comment about me supporting it just comes from an email that I sent to John, telling him I've heard about this site plan and asked him if I could see it, because it sounded to me like one that, early on in the Reed project that we talked about with the steering committee at the time. And I actually did have things about it that I liked for that plan. We presented it, we took a walk up into the park, we showed them that it was going to impact the park, how it was going to impact the park.
Show who?
The steering committee.
Okay.
The first time that, with the Reed project, there was a separate steering committee that was involved in all the design decisions.
Yep.
And there were some public, members of the public there, and we stood in the park, and it was unanimously shot down.
And what, why? I mean, at what basis?
Because of the impact of the park, and the proximity of the road to the budding properties on the north side of the park.
And the parking was further removed from the library itself?
From the library. So that committee shot it down, and it's never been revisited. But I haven't seen the plan that you're referring to, so I don't, I don't know.
That Charlie's referring to, thank you.
The question came up, are you interested in the answer to the bond, the bond question?
Yeah, if that's information we can gather, that'd be great.
Right. The principal, the estimate for the principal is fifty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and the interest is fifty-seven thousand dollars annually.
So a hundred thousand and some change around numbers. And, and to one more point that Mr. Priestley made, I want to ask Charlie, because he implied that there would be no cost to delaying the project. Could you address that, Charlie and Bettina?
Bettina and I were just talking about that, and I'm going to let Bettina respond, if you don't mind, sir.
No.
You okay?
She's like, "Thanks."
Geez, thanks, Charlie. Thanks, buddy.
There would be a cost.
The cost of construction is, there's inflationary pressures on that, and you're going to be, the more you delay, the cost of this is hard to see on an existing, on a comparable basis, you can, you to bid this thing out, a year out, or eighteen months out, it's hard to see that number's not going up. We are looking at inflationary pressures on materials, we are looking at inflationary pressures on the labor side of things, as we are in the mid-coast, in the main market, compounded by the industry broadly across the nation, you are seeing a couple of things, which is, we are going through a generational lack of people coming into this business, and so you are having the talent, there's a bid for talent. And so, and I have not done the math on this, so I'm going to now get swatted again over here. If you use a rule of thumb.
Direct, go ahead.
Yikes. For, and Will'll jump in if I'm, you know, these are, in rules of thumb, a third, a third, a third, okay? Which is a third material cost, a third subcontractors, and a third in-house labor or carpentry, or that kind of thing. What you're seeing is, on the combination, if you're looking at it on an annualized basis, you're looking at an annual inflationary pressure of somewhere between eight and twelve percent right now.
Correct. That's overall on the cost, on the total project.
And that doesn't mean necessarily for this project, it is, as we are seeing, a blend of those, a third, a third, a third, you're looking at eight to twelve percent inflation.
I think this board has shown clear commitment to going forward with the library project. No, 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 I thank you for those comments. I would just like to say that I think that this board has shown clear commitment to the library as planned, you know, any other design, that horse is out of the barn. Look, I've been on the, Jeff and I have been on the select board less than a year, so a lot of the things that people want to complain about, we can't blame us, but, but anyway, but seriously, seriously, I, but we have been very, you know, very committed to it, and I, you know, and I only ask the question only of Will, only in relation to the parking, because I feel that, I personally feel that maybe the parking has not been fully vetted, which is why I have an interest in making sure that we have these discussions embedded.
Okay.
My name is Sonny Fogel, and I have sat in all of your positions myself, so I have
sympathy, but not a lot. I'm representing the Parks Committee. This town has a Parks Committee. None of the park discussion has come to that committee until last week. This is appalling. Forty percent of that park is being taken away. Most of the trees are going to be taken down. None of this went through the Parks Committee. We never saw any plans in detail, never had it discussed with us, and maybe you don't want to have a Parks Committee. But it's appalling that nobody was speaking for the park, and keeping the park as much as it could be, as it is. It is, by the way, a memorial park, and I know that Mrs. Imblyst gave it either side for the park, but the town turned it in to a memorial park. And I think that you all should be very careful about dividing this park up like this. As far as I'm concerned, there's plenty of parking all around, and you don't need those fourteen spaces, but I know I'm speaking into the clouds. And I hope that this select board will pay more attention to the committees in terms of consulting them about new things that happen. We have had this happen again in other committees, where things were done because some committee of the state came and said, "You have to do this," and they never discuss it with the committee. It's very important to use your committees, they care about what they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what you said. And I, I don't understand why the Parks Committee would not have been consulted.
Anybody else? Got somebody getting up?
I'm Betsy Ellen, I live in Rockport on Summer Street, and I, I didn't realize the Parks Committee hadn't been consulted, I, I agree that that, that was quite an oversight. But I think that this is another opportunity for creativity, because I think that, I think the parking is necessary. It was always a problem, I was on the library committee for years, and that was always a complaint that patrons made. Yes, there's a lot of parking around town, but there's a qualitative difference between parking spots that are very close to the library, and parking spots that are, you know, behind the, the Shepherd Block. It's just not possible for an older person, or a person with, with an infant and a toddler, they're not going to schlep themselves across from the Shepherd Block to the library, it's just not going to happen. So I personally think that the parking is necessary, but I do think there's a way to incorporate the parking in the park, and improve the park, because the monuments in that park are scattered around, and they're, they're just sort of, there's no rhyme or reason to them. And I think that if the Parks Committee got involved, there might be a way to actually make other improvements to the park, that make it a nicer, more accessible, more attractive park, with, with better plantings than the trees that are, you know, some of them are dying and falling down and causing problems, when we don't have any control over them. Maybe we can, we can make a plan for the park, so that there is parking incorporated, and improvements made to make it a more enjoyable park, and a more attractive park for the public.
Thank you.
I am Jen Porter from Rockport, right around the corner from the library. And Mr. Gartley, I have a couple of questions about the possible new designs. And also just to the select board, I was under the impression that when the library vote happened, that that was strictly for the library, and that the parking and the road possible changes was going to be a whole different process. So I've been sort of waiting for that discussion to happen, and so I'm, that's what I'm going to talk about a little bit, or I have a couple of questions. So I was wondering, that, that new sort of peninsula that will stick out instead of the island, what will that be actually made of?
Right here?
Yeah. I mean, will that be plantings, or concrete, or pavement, or what?
No, that's intended to be plantings.
Plantings, okay.
Yep. We're, we're working with Terrence DeWan, landscape architect. Now that we've gotten to this point, we've handed it off to them, and they're, and I think what we're just talking about with the Parks Committee and that design, this is actually good timing, because they're just getting started on trying to figure out what all that green space should be, where the monument should go, but they really haven't, that's what they've been asked to do, but they really haven't started yet, so.
And I've, I've come up to this podium before to talk about the safety of the new plan, and I, if you can make that just a little, if we could zoom out a little bit, I don't know if it's possible with that slide, or there's another slide?
I think that...
Well, I can, I can use that one, I guess.
You want to see more?
Yeah, I, that's a good one, actually. So, can you change this one over here too, Will, is that possible?
They're both the same.
Same.
Oh, just different colors, okay.
How about, that one has the whole.
Yeah, that's, that's a good one.
Yeah, what I want to show here is the curve of this road that comes up, and then how this new intersection joint, where it comes together here. I'm really concerned, I mean, are, the, the people who use that intersection the most are the people who live nearby there. We have elderly folks, we have kids of all ages, we have several different boys about to get their driver's licenses. My mom comes all the time to visit me at my house, and I really worry about cars leaving Lime Rock, and trying to turn down, or off, or, or, you know, coming around this way, and this being a blind curve.
Right.
And I, I do understand that the DOT has approved it, but I still have concerns. And the way that people accelerate as they go up the hill, many of us who live in the neighborhood have talked about when we're coming out of Hughes, right where Gracem's is here.
Yep.
It, it happens all the time, where we look, and we go, "Oh, no, no cars are coming, so I'm going to pull out," and then all of a sudden, there's a car right on our tail, and it's like we've, we've, you know, pulled out in front of someone without any intention of doing that. And there's a, there's a, a way of accelerating that really happens up Union Street. And I know you have, like, narrowing in some areas to kind of avoid that, but this, this icy area, I, I, I just, I really want to voice my concerns. And I know the island has seemed like a complicated intersection, but Mr. Kelly has mentioned in the past that despite it being an interesting island, and roads coming from different areas, there are almost no history of accidents as it is. So that's, that's my big concern, and I also do want to speak for the park. And I live in a tiny house, I have a tiny yard, and we, in the neighborhood, we do use that park, so I am concerned about losing the green space there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Can I ask you, are you, do you live on Lime Rock?
Yes.
And have you ever, what are your thoughts of, sorry, I don't want to sound like a broker recorder, this is not something that I'm advocating, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
What do you think of the possibility of Lime Rock being a one-way street? Would that be a good thing or a bad thing for you?
I don't know.
Well, think about it.
Yeah.
Send me an email, you know? I mean, I'm just curious, and, and sorry, no, no offense, guys, but the answer that, "Well, we might want to change it back someday," just didn't really sit that well with me, because if it, if, if, if there's some pros, and we get, you know, some additional parking, or if it helps us in some way, I, I don't think that's a very good answer for why you don't make it one-way. But, but having said that, I'm not trying to push something that the townspeople don't want either.
Well, for years, I've, I've heard the concerns of the parking, and I, and I do understand that, I, I think that I, I weigh in on the side of, you know, fewer parking spots, but maybe, and I hope, this new library will be wildly popular, encourage more people to come, and maybe there will be more cars than there have been in the past. So I'm, I'm open to that. What I, what I wish, if I could create a, I wish that we were actually going to achieve what a lot of people are worrying about, which is to have parking on grade, where people don't have to cross the street to actually get to the library. And I, I don't have a great solution, but I do dream about a scenario where maybe there's a, a way the road curves around here, and there's parking that goes off here, and, and the road isn't, you're not crossing the road, or going down a steep hill, and I just think, there's got to be a way to achieve that, and we haven't yet. People are still going to be parking up here on icy roads, and going down steep hills to get there, and, you know. Better parking is going to encourage more people to come, so.
And, but we can't keep the intersection the way it is, because it's terrible. I mean, I know that we don't have, I, I know we don't have accidents, but it, near accidents all the time, and, because I live right around the corner too, and, and it's bad, but I do have concerns that we're just taking, the, the concern that I have all the time, going, going to and from my house, or back to my house.
Yeah.
And, and, and causing that for Lime Rock. I'm just not, I'm a little uncomfortable about that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, I agree that the intersection that we have now is, is dodgy in some ways, and I, I just don't see this as a solution for safety, and that's my big concern, so.
I think Will has some numbers, I think, on some of the safety parameters here, site distances and the like, so this would be a good time to talk about that.
Yeah, so the, the site distance, I'm trying to, well, it's, it's, me, I'm going to switch plans, sorry. I'm going to go to, so right now, if you come to the uphill side of the island, and you're sitting there, waiting to turn right to go north up Union Street, your site distance is...
I can't see it, I'm sorry.
Well, your, your site distance looking up Union Street is really good, obviously, you can see like five or six hundred feet. But looking down Central, you can see about two hundred and eighteen feet, right, if you're sitting where, where the hand is. If I go back to this plan, and you're stopped at the new Lime Rock intersection, and you're looking down, looking up Union, you can still see five or six hundred feet, you're looking down Central Street, it's, because of the way that curve is, and the changes in elevation, you lose about twenty feet to thirty feet, depending on where you stop. So you've got the stop bar here, but the edge of pavement is way out here, so depending on where you are right in there, you're going to lose about twenty to thirty feet of that, so you're going to be more like a hundred and ninety to two hundred feet of site distance. Then, it's, right, so that's at about where the benches are in the park, then down in front of the restaurants and the buildings, you actually can see again. It's really kind of strange, because of the way it flattens out, and you can see over the walls. But the, the critical distance is that it is about twenty feet less in site distance than what you have now from the top side of the island.
And the DOT's numbers are?
So the stop, well, the stopping site distance for twenty-five miles an hour is a hundred and fifty-five feet, and that's the design for twenty-five miles an hour. DOT would like to see the two hundred, and so we're right there on the limit of the two hundred for twenty-five miles.
But Will, where do you have to stop in your, where the current condition is now, to get that, that maximum site distance? Are you stopping behind the stop line, or are you almost in the intersection to get that distance?
No, you're sitting, no, you're basically sitting right at the crosswalk.
Right at the crosswalk.
Yeah.
So, given, given all the circumstances with the multiple roads and things that are happening there, does that factor that they give you for that speed still hold true?
Actually, yes, it does, it's, because that stopping site distance is calculated on a flat piece of ground, and you're going actually uphill.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you're on a flat piece of ground with just one road going straight up and down, rather than two or three different angles and a sharp turn, does that factor into theirs?
Well, the way that they, they calculate that is basically just reaction time, so you see something, and you brake, and how quickly can you stop going at twenty-five miles an hour? That's what that stopping site distance is. That's why what DOT, so that's the, the ash tow limit. Then DOT says that what they want for a new intersection is two hundred feet. They, they bump it from the one fifty-five to the two hundred, because they're always trying to be conservative.
A line of sight though, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet of line of sight.
Right.
But Will, that, you're talking about going north, all those statistics were going north on Union, right? Going north Camp, Camden?
No, 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 I'm, no, going north on Union is not a problem from either place, you can see five, six hundred feet.
Oh, so you were talking about coming...
It's, if you're coming out of Lime Rock or Russell, and you're looking left down Central...
Okay.
We're right there, we're about at 218 now and we're going to be just under 200 in the new location. So we're...
Okay, so, so my concern, and, and this is, right now, when I, every day, when I come out of Camden and I come, I, I'm coming down Union Street toward the library, right?
Yep.
Toward the Opera House. And I have to stop completely and get honked at and everything, um, especially in the summer. Um, I have to stop completely to make sure that there's nothing coming around that corner because the house is in the way. I have seen and been involved in so many near accidents and it doesn't give me a lot of, you know, comfort to know that it hasn't happened and especially in the summer. And so my concern is coming down that way, trying to see around that existing house and taking a left.
Under, under Russell?
Onto Russell.
Under Russell.
And I understand that this is supposed to make that better and I'm trying to do a leap of faith here to think that everybody knows what they're talking about because I, I don't really have that level of confidence yet. But what I'm particularly concerned about, or my question is, are you transferring that problem that I have, turning onto Russell, onto the people turning left onto Lime Rock?
So, and I'm, I'm taking my conversations with DOT and the traffic engineers and trying to, you know, remember everything that's been said. But basically, there's nothing that we're doing or that really is going to change. You coming down Union trying to turn onto Russell. I mean, that wall and that house are still going to be there. So that's not going to change that.
I'm told that I'm going to come all the way down though. I'm, I'm told that I'm going to basically come all the way down and take a left.
Well, we're going to eliminate your option of taking the uphill side of that island that's there now.
Right, so it's in.
And that's the one where if you make that turn, you can't really see very far.
That's right, but I think that's the proper place to turn.
It's where I go.
That's where I turn, that's where I turn all the time. Yes, yes, right.
That is exactly why DOT is okay with making this change. They do not like that island. They do not like the fact that everybody coming to that intersection has multiple ways that they could go.
Right.
They don't like the fact that people coming out Russell, there may be one sitting on each side of the island, in the middle, waiting to go in either direction.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I could tell you all kinds of scenarios, right.
And then coming down Union Street, somebody stops and has no idea what to do because now both options of going to Russell are blocked. So we've gone in circles about what is the best thing to do here. The fact that Lime Rock Street also comes into that intersection at the same time, it, it, it is definitely a strange situation.
But are we creating the same problem with the vision of the house being over here, Lime Rock being over here, in fact Lime Rock being a little further down than it is now? Are we just moving the Russell turn problem onto the Lime Rock people? Uh, you don't have to answer that, okay? But that's my concern.
No, I'm just trying to think, I'm trying to understand what you're, yeah.
People coming off Lime Rock, taking a left and going right onto Russell?
No, I'm talking about coming off of Union and taking a left onto Lime Rock.
On the Lime Rock.
Can they see what's coming around that house? I can't see what's coming around the house if I take a left onto Russell. And maybe they're going to fix that for Russell, but are they going to transfer that problem over to Lime Rock?
That is definitely going to be the, the toughest spot to see. That's going to, it's going to be very similar to what it is now when you turn onto Russell.
That's, that seems crazy. I mean, if we talk about trying to improve that intersection, what kind of improvement is that?
Why, why couldn't we have the, why couldn't we have, I mean, I know this, this does interfere with the park, but you've got to make some compromises, but why couldn't it come in higher?
Well, there's a, there's an actual point there where you'd have to go a lot higher because you're looking, like right now, where it is, and then we've got it proposed, you can see by the house and over the top of the wall. But as soon as you go about 20 or 30 feet higher, now you're looking right, you've got to look through the house to see down. Um, you, you'd have to go all the way.
Have the road going higher, have the parking down here and have this all connected.
Right, but like I said, I mean, we've definitely looked at that and, and so if you come in right here, the sight distance is actually worse.
Okay.
To get to the point that it's better, it would have to be up here and you'd have to take out the bushes that these people have in their lawn. But you could come out up here, get rid of that bush and then now the sight distance is better and this intersection is very clean.
Is it, is it true?
But you're, you're still going to have this problem.
Um, I want to, I want to see if there's, I mean, we're having a couple of multiple comments and I want to see if there's anybody else who has not yet spoken who wishes to make a comment.
Don Flock.
Oh, it's Don here. Yeah, come on up. Uh, so I want to get other, other perspectives here.
My name is Don Flock. I live in five Lime Rock Street. Been there for now 20 years. And, uh, I'm not sure if I really know where to begin. Um, I do know that, uh, that intersection is a, a problem. But when I'm coming back home, coming toward Lime Rock Street, I go on the right side of the island and then make a, I have, to me, I first saw this plan and I thought, you know, if I were a betting man, I would bet someone was going to get really hurt by the way you've bumped that out, taken away the width of the street and then making people, making people, um, get out of their car and be up there on that first crossroad. If you, if you stand at my house, uh, people come around that corner and they're probably doing about 20 miles an hour immediately because they stomp on it every time. It's just they, they've been released and they're really moving by the time they get to that crosswalk you have up there. But...
Right here?
Yes.
That's not a crosswalk, I'm sorry. That, all that is, is marking where the pavement is going to, to be redone. So that's not a crosswalk, that's just, sorry about that.
Okay, but I'm just, I'm using it as a point of how fast they're moving at that time because they've really got it right there. So I think another thing is that, that I'm, to me, looking at creative ways to solve problems, I'm really shocked that I didn't see something here and say, if we made Lime Rock a one-way street, what, what's, would that help? And, and, and I didn't see a study for that. But anyway, the other thing is that, um, when you're redoing Lime Rock Street, since I'm the second house up, and those are antique houses right there, which have no front yards now, very close, very close to the street. So I would hope, in your fans, that you would not destroy the front yard, which are only about that wide because they're antique houses. You keep those curbs away from our houses or whatever you're putting in. And as, I, I know I've said this before in these meetings, but after living there 20 years and watching the library and watching people come and go, as you can see, we're the second house up. Very seldom was there enough cars that they even got parallel parked up that far. This has been a red herring since I started coming to these meetings. How many years have we been doing this? This parking bit is a bunch of nonsense as far as, if you think you're going to grow this town and you're going to have a lot more people visiting that library, maybe you need a lot more parking lots. But all I've ever seen here is there wasn't adequate parking down below for handicapped people. But 95% of the time, no one ever parks as far as Lime Rock as far, in front of my house. You know, I, I, I just understand why you think you have to have these before, all these damn parking spaces there and taking that much out of it. A beautiful park is one of the reasons we bought our houses. It's right across the street is this fabulous park. Kids are playing in it all the time and, and they used to have summer camps there and now it's all being diminished for pavement. Nothing but pavement out there. So, um, I think you should reconsider this whole parking thing and see what you could come up with, with a little better solution.
Don, could I interrupt one second? I just have a question. Deborah's asked it of, um, of other folks. What was your opinion on having the street be one-way? Do you think that would be helpful or unhelpful?
You're speaking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, he was saying something and I was just going in.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I think it would be helpful because you don't have to have the street so wide, you know, you keep the street, uh, uh...
Okay.
How far are you going to?
I was just asking a question.
No one, no one discussed it. When you have those parking spots there, how, maybe you, you could ask this. How far into the park are you invading with those parking spaces? 20, 24 feet?
Um, well, at the top, at the north, uh, side, it's just the length of the parking space, which is about 20, but by the time you get down to the, uh, library, um, they're probably more like 30 feet into the park.
Okay. Do you realize how much property that's taking out of the park by the time you get down there?
6,500 square feet.
Yeah, that's a lot in a small park like that. So I think that's, I, I don't think you saw, the building I'm fine with and the positioning, except I just want to make sure that with our antique houses, my house is built in 1836, you know, the, the main part of it, that, that, you know, I have very small front yard and I know the house closest to the library has a even smaller front yard. So you can't take our property without a lot of all problems. So, um, uh, I think you just could rethink it a little bit here.
The edge, the edge of the road's not opposed to change at all. So we're keeping it right where it is.
Well, I would hope so, thank you.
Uh, anybody else who hasn't made a comment yet?
Oh, Dougie, you're saving it?
No, no, I thought we had some people in the back that wanted to talk.
No, excuse me, Bill Freeman on Spear Street in Rockport. And I think it was Sony said and listened a little bit to what Don had said also. Uh, we started this project like five or six years ago in this room talking about, again, parking at that time. And I just remember, we talked about like diagonal parking for about nine cars in some of those early plans that we showed. And, uh, my concern is what you've heard from other people here tonight, and that is to, uh, take 40% of our park and now make it into a parking lot for cars. I think is a huge mistake for the, for the town. So I had hoped that the Selectmen would relook at the parking and see if we could do something to save more of the green that we have in the middle of this town.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Daly, resident of Rockport. Um, I just wanted to, um, speak to the comment about, you know, seeing what the library used to be like on one Lime Rock. And I just want to make sure everyone knows that in our current place right now, they are rocking it out there. And it is robust. And when we think about planning for a 21st century library, we have to have spaces. And I wrote you all a letter, um, speaking as a grandmother. Um, I need, I need close accessibility as I'm escorting my young grandchildren, three, four, six and nine, over to the library to take advantage of some of the awesome programming that's happening. It's just phenomenal. Um, as well as, you know, those who can't get around but yet don't have a handicap tag. So, um, I do hear the residents that are close by, but, um, for all people in Rockport, West Rockport, Don at the Cove, Simmington Corners, please maintain the 14 spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all may laugh at me, but, um, you know, we could do a lot of, uh, young people doing valet parking for what we're talking about here. I keep hearing, you know, I need to be right here and, and, and I, anyway, it's not, it's not the craziest.
Uh, anybody else wish to make a comment that hasn't yet? Anybody else? No? Okay, John?
So, for those who have advocated for parking, I think it's really important that you understand that for this scheme, 370 some odd thousand dollars, yes, there are other things included, that the total change in parking spaces compared to the cars that park on the side of the park and on Lime Rock Street and on Russell Ave in the area impacted is zero. There have been no parking spaces gained. There are 14 spaces designated. If you count the cars, I can show it to you on a piece of paper, you can do it yourselves. There hasn't been a gain of a single parking space for all that expenditure. If you don't believe me, I'll show you the piece of paper. You can count them yourselves. Um, if you look at this scheme in terms of safety, every person who's going to and from the designated parking has to cross the street. Child, elderly, it's on a slope, you park your car, you cross the street, you go to the library, you get out of the library, you cross the street. That's not a safe arrangement. People have talked about the, uh, intersection, the, the time it takes for a car turning around the corner, coming up the hill from Central Street to where it would impact a car that's turning left into Lime Rock Street is between three and three and a half seconds. How do I know that? I stood there and watched car after car. And anyone can do this, you've all got cell phones with stopwatches. Stand right where you'd be parked or stopped to turn onto Lime Rock Street, time it yourself. Three to three and a half seconds. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration prescribes for that speed zone, a reaction time of four and a half seconds. I didn't make that up, I just looked it up. Anyone else can look it up. We'll just observe that the sight distance is actually reduced from the current situation. So there are aspects of this design that make, uh, great efforts towards increasing safety and pedestrian safety, but we are so far off the mark. And this would sound like sour grapes if there wasn't another solution. And there is another solution. It's about 300 feet away from here. I invite all of you on the Select Board, Budget Committee, anyone who's interested to look at it. Mark has seen it, others in this room have seen it. I, I showed it to the Parks Commission and my feeling was, everyone there said, yes, this is better. Mark even went so far as to say, I'd like to approach the current Chief of Police and ask their opinion on the two different schemes because the Chief of Police hasn't even looked at the scheme, nor has the Fire Chief. This scheme requires removing a fire hydrant. It requires removing a utility pole. If you look at that pole, it's got a zillion wires on it. That doesn't come cheap. I'm sure Charlie could attest to that. It involves moving a monument. It involves a lot of grading that has already been alluded to in this meeting already that's necessitated by the interaction between the building and the site design. Those are all expensive components. So I also heard it from two individuals that this is the best design. Well, it's not the best design. It's the only design that has been considered to date. And you have the opportunity to save a bunch of money and it costs you nothing to compare two schemes and find out which one is less money, which one is better in terms of traffic safety, which one is better in terms of functionality, which one is safer for pedestrians, which one doesn't involve cutting down all but one tree, which is what this scheme requires. Every tree except one has to be cut down. And I could go on and on, but that's over too long.
Thank you.
How do you present it to the board?
They don't want to see it.
Hang on just a second here.
Yeah, I just, I, I appreciate what John just said and I realize this came out late so it really didn't have a chance to be distributed. But we do have a note here from the police chief who says that he's looked at the Gardley and Dorfski plan for Lime Rock Street intersection and he does not have any issues with that plan. And then also from the Fire Chief, uh, he does want to move the fire hydrant across the street, but otherwise from a fire department standpoint, he doesn't have a problem with the intersection. So I apologize, John, that came in late so we didn't have a chance to share that with you.
I have seen the other scheme.
Is anybody else?
Why, wait, hold on. I, I want to just correct that. The other scheme was dealt with three years ago, correct, Will, thereabouts?
I don't, I don't know what John's scheme, I haven't seen it.
Another scheme that it brings the intersection up higher. Is that what your scheme is?
What, what I think would make sense to do, Rick and everyone here, is to formally introduce and all, that addresses all the concerns that have been raised by folks who've spoken tonight, including budgetary issues.
Let me, let me just say that there were, there were three, three proposals presented back three years ago to the Library Steering Committee, the Library Committee, uh, that was looked at three years ago. And those three, three, there were three different options. One of them brought the intersection much higher up on Union Street and came across and brought the, and put the parking up in that vicinity. That, that, uh, uh, plan or that option was summarily voted down by pretty much everybody there. That, nobody liked that, that option. And, you know, the, the people that were, that were charged with the responsibility of doing that work three years ago, of moving something forward, something forward, basically said, no, we're not interested in that, but at that time, the Fire Chief was there, and he basically, he looked at the, the plan that we're currently looking at and at the other plan, but that one was discharged, and at that point in time, three years ago, said, as long as I get a, if I can get a fire truck up this road, I'm fine, and, and that's where we're, we're at.
So, Rick, my concern is, is that we keep referring to a Library Steering Committee, Library Committee having looked at this, okay, the Library Steering Committee, no offense to anyone, was not charged with the fiscal responsibility for the town, we are, um, did, did any of those people, um, live right in that immediate area like a number of us do, and, and, and talk to the people who are impacted by it, and so, my concern is that, while I am completely supportive of going forward with the library as planned, doing all of that, I feel, and I've said this a number of times at the board meetings, that I don't believe there's been a lot of transparency with respect to the parking and, and this intersection, and some people, including me, are impacted by it every day, and I would like us to consider whether or not there is some ability for us to look at other plans, not just the Steering Committee, but the Select Board, the Select Board is the elected body here, okay, and the elected body that's being asked to fund this, I would like to see alternative plans, but I don't want to do anything, having said that, that's going to hold up the construction of the library, and whether or not the two are, you know, mutually, uh, you know, are, are inconsistent is, is a problem.
Uh, somebody, or here?
Well, I said a question, so the square footage loss is sixty-five hundred, I was impressed with how you quickly.
Well, I knew that question, I knew that question was coming, so.
Well, just because several people have brought it up on a one-way street, let's say you do the same thing, but it's a one-way street, I know it might be hard to do it on the spot, but how much do you, you still lose some, right?
Well, if it's a one, if it's ninety-degree parking, we still need the width of that road to get in and out of the parking space, so we can't reduce the road, if it went one way and we went diagonal, then we'd probably lose a space or two, but we could then shrink, shrink the road, so we could probably shrink it by ten feet, maybe?
Can you flatten it out enough, if you go diagonal?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to mess with it, but I'm not, I'm not sure, so, I mean, you might lose ten feet, um, you might gain, you might gain ten, ten feet of width over, what is that, fourteen spaces, a hundred and forty feet, so maybe fourteen hundred square feet you could gain back?
Okay, fourteen hundred back.
So what, I'm, I'm glad to see that you've actually done the bump outs on Union Street and Russell Avenue, uh, because one of the things that's always been a problem in town is that the streets are not properly, properly widthed to have proper legal parking, so regardless of how Lime Rock Street ends up, you're going to have to take some of the park to make some of the parking, whether you go up and down it, you go into it, you've got to have, and we have to start when we do things, to do streets properly, and unfortunately, we have to take something, so.
And I haven't, and the other thing I wanted to point out is right through here, where we have bumped things out, I mean, there's still over twenty-four feet of pavement there, which is more than what our ordinance requires for a new road, so, we're not narrowing this down to a point that it's too narrow or unsafe, it still gives you more than twelve-foot travel lanes.
Delaying, delaying the, uh, the intersection and the parking work, especially the intersection work, may sound beneficial, but Will has done a great deal of diligence in making sure that his, his design has been vetted out by traffic engineers, and none of us are traffic engineers, and to go and come up with an alternative at this point, I advise that it could be a hindrance to the project, and it could be a cost increase to the town, because you would have to go through that same process, and that could take many months.
Mark, I'm also, I'm also glad you pointed out that, that parking spaces that are used now aren't really parking spaces, I mean, just because people park there doesn't mean that you can say that they're a legal parking space.
I mean, what, what is a road that size, Lime Rock Street, what would be the proper legal width of it?
I mean, twenty feet would be.
And, and the street now is probably barely that.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah, so, and then when you add, what's a, a width of a parking space, nine feet?
Nine, nine feet.
By sixteen, roughly?
Um, no, parallel spaces need to be twenty-two.
Twenty-two, so, I mean, we're just trying to make things a little bit better and more safe, but in order to do that, we have to take a little bit, so.
I, I want to just, uh, say a word, you know, this, the expression "lack of transparency" has been sort of thrown around here a lot tonight, and I take a certain amount of umbrage with that, um, you, you know, this has been a process that's gone on for about four years, I understand that the sitting Select Board right now is responsible for making the decision, but going back over several years at least, you know, there was a Steering Committee that met and did site walks, and Ben was involved with, the library people were involved with, previous Select Boards have looked at these things, clearly, this is a very complicated project, you know, it involves the DOT, the municipal government, um, there's a lot of moving pieces, so there's a lot of opportunity for miscommunication, perhaps misunderstandings, I get that, but I don't think that miscommunications and maybe some misunderstandings equates to lack of transparency, you know, we've had multiple committees meeting weekly, bi-weekly, to discuss all of this stuff, uh, we've tried our best to communicate with you in our liaison reports and everything, so, lack of transparency carries a negative connotation, if you want to say that there's been some miscommunication perhaps, some misunderstandings, I can accept that.
Well, call it what you will, but the fact that committees meet on something doesn't mean the town as a whole is really aware of it, Doug, and I have, and I have certainly watched the live streams, and I've also seen the Board say, now, we're only voting on the building, we're not voting on the site plan, we're only voting on the building, and, and, and the Board's been very careful about doing that for all good reason, but I think it left, I think that it has left a, a sense among some people in town that, that when are we going to get then to the site plan, and that never had happened in a way that I think people might have expected, and not the way that I expected as a resident before being on the Board.
Let me talk a little bit about that, because the, the concept plan has been developed over the last year or fifteen, whatever the timeframe is, and the concept plan has included the architect's drawing of the building, it has included some of these drawings, these drawings that we're seeing tonight are not being seen for the first time in public, uh, and it's included all that, what we voted on was the funding part of that concept plan for the building, now we have to consider the funding part of the concept plan for this other section of the project, and that was always the way it was going to be, that was the Select Board several years ago, and they made the motion and, and established the budget of, of three-point-five million for the library, that budget was established for the library building, not including parking and intersection improvements, with the idea that those would be developed along with the concept plan, and they have been, but that the funding vote on those would happen at a separate time, now we're there, and we're talking about the funding of that, so I think, you know, the concept of this has been out there for a while, and it has been well-vetted, as Will spoke about, he's talked about going to a traffic engineer and having peer-reviewed it, I think already, more than once, and, and having it done another time before, uh, the final documents go out to bid, so, I don't think it's any mystery as to where we are, I think that how we've gotten here has been a very deliberate process, a process that's included a lot of professional input, and, and I think, uh, it's time now for us to say, okay, we have to, if nothing else, we have to let the townspeople decide.
Right, I don't think it's involved some of the people that it needed to, the residents and the Parks Committee and others, and so I'm not going to debate it, you know, it is what it is, but we can agree to disagree.
Okay, Stevie?
I'm probably not going to be able to say this clearly, but I think part of the conversation was that the entire project, as all, 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 all components, the building and the other part, when we were trying to pass the bond, and we all know what the atmosphere in town was like, I won't say why, but we, we know what that was like, so when the, the bond, when we were trying to get people to vote to pass this last bond, it incorporated the entire plan, the building, as well as the parking and all of the other things, never, as Ken said, was the funding the reason for voting for the bond, last year's budget, last year's budget included the fact that, that this project we're now talking about was separate from the library expense, it was separate in funding, but it was not separate in concept, that was always the one big plan, and yet we're going to fund this with a bond, the building, and fundraising, which has been miraculous, and the rest of it will come, as was Rick's pointed out, everybody's pointed out, we had this money in the budget last year, and to somebody who talked about saving money, like not paying or paying rent, part of the reason the Select Board decided to take it out, last year's budget, was because the building wasn't going to be done, and it didn't make sense to use that money last year before we were going to be kicking off the bond and things, so, I, I, to me, it just seems like a really simple, I can't believe I said that.
One thing I, one thing I'd like to say is, we, we as a collective, all, all of you folk, and, and us and the library committees and the library people, have come further in the last nine months than they have in the previous five years, so, yeah, you know, there are some things that we're shaking out the bugs, we're trying to make sure, and some things probably do, and have been overlooked, but I think for the most part, we're trying to shepherd this along in a fashion that we can get it done, because it's been too long, so.
Well, and I think, Mark, that idea, I, I totally agree with Doug on the idea of, it makes me quite hot under the collar, but I don't have a collar, about lack of transparency, because, man, I have been with this project for ten years, on the ad hoc committee, on the Steering Committee, there were two committees, and still on the Library Board, or Library Committee, so, I, I mean, I've sat with you for how many years, and you, so, I mean, and I realized, looking around this room, the faces that are here, that have been involved with this from the get-go, are pretty few in number right now, and I love history.
Don't forget a lot of us watched by livestream, and I did watch the whole thing by livestream, and I don't ever recall this Board ever voting to approve this site plan, and so I watched it, I've asked my fellow Select Board members a couple of months ago to cite to a set of minutes where that was done, and I haven't had anybody come back to me and show me any minutes, and I certainly on livestream didn't see such a vote, so that's where I'm coming from, so don't just count faces, please.
No, but I'm also thinking that Will and when Steve Smith, when our architects, both architects, Dick Reed, the initial architect, and, and Steve, this was all included in the overall concept, that's where I'm saying there was transparency, unless Will not, I mean, Steve's not here to answer that question, but when those plans were presented, and however that Steve's plans were accepted, the architectural plans, the landscaping and things was, was part of the overall plan, that was my point, Deborah.
Yeah, I understand, Stevie, and may, maybe Doug's point about it being a misconception is a better one, perhaps, because I think that, I think that because we were always so focused on saying we're, we're, we're only voting here on the library, we're not voting on the site plan, that's something else, that's, you know, we're not funding for the, the parking and the intersection, et cetera, because we always separated those out, I think there might be a misconception that the site plan, part of it, was going to be vetted and discussed more when, for, for those of, for, for, we have different perceptions, you felt it was, and I feel it wasn't.
That kind of gets back to the question I asked Will earlier, there was sort of this transition over time between these clearly defined plans, and, again, it was just sort of weekly meetings, oh, the grade here isn't quite right, and, you know, oh, there's this utility here, and you're right, and it all.
And as far as Select Board votes, the Select Board never voted on the plan of the building either, the Select Board hired an architect, and, and the architect was charged with developing a plan for a new library, and the architect reported to us regularly, and the vote that happened was, was when we voted to put, put the question on the ballot, and then the people voted for it.
For one-point-five million, and that's, you know, then there goes that, that's.
That was, that was the funding of the building piece of the plan, but the plan for the building was never voted on by the Board either, so it's not, you know, you can't, you can't say the site plan wasn't voted on, because, yes, it wasn't, but neither was the building plan, and.
Right, right, and, and the point is that the people, it's not whether you voted on it, the people of the town have not voted on the building or the site, they haven't been included in the discussion, and they haven't voted on.
Okay, that's, I'm not going to go there. Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet wish to speak? If not, Richard?
Richard Anderson again, fourteen Lime Rock Street, I think that, first of all, I want to back up what, what, uh, John said about the number of parking places, that there are, you can park fourteen parallel parking space cars on Lime Rock Street today without one penny spent, and my frustration is, is really about the fact that, that, we are, we understood that we were going to leave the, the site plan funding, yes, there was a photograph of the, of the, of the site plan, and we, I've talked with a number of you about making sure that when the bond and when the fundraising effort is made, that you don't show the site plan, because the people are funding the building, they're not funding the site plan, and, and blessedly, everybody has been honoring that, and so my frustration is that I thought, okay, now it's time to talk about the parking, and the streets and the intersection, and what we're going to do, and one, then I learned a week, two weeks ago from Will, that, you can't just build the building and leave the streets and everything just the way they are, no matter what you might wish you want to do, you can't do that, and so my frustration is all of a sudden now, you've built, you've designed a, a building that you can't build without more money being spent, and that is really frustrating to see that, because I thought the, the discussions about the park and the streets were just going to be a nice, open discussion, that we would not, I shouldn't say nice, an open discussion with lots of options, nothing that we had to do for any reason, other than to accommodate enough parking, to accommodate safety, you know, those kinds of discussions that were going to drive this parking and street plan, but now all of a sudden, we're forced to accept a plan, something, we've got to spend money on the streets and the parking and the intersection, whether we want to or not, and so you now have created a one-point-eight, seven-million-dollar project, and, and that's very, very frustrating, and I, I've got a photograph, thirty-two cars were parked within se, seventy-five steps of that library on December ninth, two thousand eighteen, now, you've got some funky parking going on, as Will said, it's parallel, it's on the street, it's all legal, but there are thirty-two cars parked around the, the area we're looking at right now, where you're going to spend three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand to be able to park twenty-two, and so I, it's a, to me, it's fiscally irresponsible to be spending the kind of money we're going to be spending to address perceived safety and parking problems, that's, there's the source of my frustration, and why I, I'll get uptight, more angry than I should, thank you.
Coming up, I think so.
My name is Beth Davis, I live at two-thirty-eight Union Street, I'm the one, all those lights are going, I live in the house all the parking lights are going to go into, so, I have, I'm going to butter the park, so I have certainly have a vested interest, and I just want to say, I came to a meeting here several months ago and did have an opportunity to comment on this plan when it was presented, I had major concerns, I was a little, actually a little ill, ill when I saw the plan, but I expressed my concerns, and I feel like I got a very thoughtful response from the architect at the planner, Will's group, I'm not exactly sure who they were, um, and they assured me that they would, um, talk with me about how we could create a buffer that would be meaningful and useful, and I greatly appreciated that, and it's helped a great deal, what I would like to ask and be assured of is if there's any change to this, that I'd be included. be included in any conversation about that, because I, it's a huge interest of mine as an butter, is my primary investment. And putting a road right next to my property would, I think, vastly change my quality of life. So, if it could just be a part of that conversation, and I don't, I'm not going to say there hasn't been transparency, I'm not sure at what point those conversations occur, I really would like to be included in them, just to have a voice. And so, no matter where it goes with it, that would go a long way to create goodwill with neighbors.
Beth, I did, I did see, after I mentioned the screening, Bettina making notes on that. So, I mean, it has been noted as far as that part, so.
I certainly felt it was received before and I trust that. I haven't seen anything yet that makes me think that isn't going to happen. I don't know how that would happen, but I'd, when we get closer to that, I know it's probably not the first in order of business. But if there's going to be a major change and shift around, that makes me a little anxious. I just want to be included in, in that and not find out about it at the last minute.
You're on our radar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have it. She, she.
She's on our neighbors list.
She's on our neighbor.
She's on our neighbors list. Okay. Does anybody else wish to make public comment at this point who hasn't spoken yet?
Can I just say one thing?
Anybody else? Yeah. Come on up to the, come on up to the mic.
I just have to take exception to this notion that, that currently there's, there's all this adequate parking around, because I know several of us that parked on Lime Rock Street tonight are parked on the sidewalk. And that is not the same as a parking spot. It's also not the same as a parking spot that's designated for library use only. So, if there's other stuff going on in town, if town is booming, you won't be able to park in, in the library spots, because those are designated library spots. Finally, I'd like to say about this idea that, you know, we're spending all this extra money. It's, A, it's not extra money. It was never supposed to be included in the 1.5, 2.5 scheme. And two, these are improvements that the town needs. The town needs to fix those sidewalks on Lime Rock Street, whether there's a, a library or not. The town needs to do something about the stream, because that wall is collapsing and has been for years. And the town also needs to do something about that intersection, which is pretty much the major intersection in the downtown area. And, and everybody acknowledges that it's not safe and it needs to be fixed. Those are not things that are unique to the library or, those are things that need to happen anyway, that the town needs to pay for. So, I don't think there's any kind of, you know, layering on of extra expense. These are things the town needs to spend money on, whether the library goes in that spot or not.
One, one quick question that I thought of, that if we had parallel parking, you know, let's just say it was one way. And if we had parallel parking on Lime Rock, can we, is there any reason we couldn't designate those as library only?
No.
So, we don't have to have face-in 90-degree parking spaces to designate them as library only?
We could designate whatever we wanted. But one thing that I do want to point out is a conversation Will and I had several years ago about parking and, you know, the issue of parking. And Will pointed out to me at the time that there's a difference between being able to just park your car and having good quality parking spaces, where somebody that's in a walker, somebody with a baby in a babe, you know, in a stroller, somebody that they can get out of their car, feel safe, open the door without it swinging open into somebody else's car. Having a number of those spaces is an important part of any kind of municipal, municipal development function, that you have to have those spaces. We have plenty, there are, there are other spaces where you, you know, you could park and your, your door is going to swing open, it's going to be on a hill. But having a certain number of spaces that are as, as good quality as we can give them, you know, parking on the sidewalk, as Betsy said, parking on the sidewalk with your wheels on one side and you're, and having your kids get out into a street, isn't really good parking from a municipal sense. You need to have some number of parking spaces that are designated safe spaces that, you know, answers that need. I mean, Ben and I have had the discussion also about how many parking spaces do we need? Are we going to build a parking lot that use the Walmart style of development and build parking? No. That's not what we're going to do in the, in the village, because we, you know, we can't have, we can't build parking for the biggest event that, that the library could possibly ever have. What we're trying to build is parking spaces that are reasonable for the day-to-day users of that building. That's, that's what we're trying to get to. And is that number 10? Is it 14? It's some number. And I, and I think Ben's probably hit it at the 14. And keep in mind, when the building's built, our, our visit, our visits will go up. They will go up considerably.
Well, if there's nothing else.
I mean, this was a lot for you folks.
It seemed like quite a bit outside of the Budget Committee.
Well, that's a good point.
Okay, I think I'm getting a sense that we're all about talked out here, so unless there's any further comment, I think we can draw this workshop to a close and next week we'll get some numbers from you guys and we'll have some decisions we have to make. Thank you all for coming.